27th, 2018 City Council. And it's good to see everyone. We have a group here this evening. I hope your holidays were eventful and you were able to be with family. But you're here tonight, so that's great. I'm going to call on Sal. Would you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would make a couple of suggestions this evening. We're about ready to go into our comments from citizens, which would anyone that would like to speak on a topic other than a matter that's in litigation, quasi judicial land use matter or manor scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We would ask them to fill out one of our forms and talk to us tonight. Now, also this evening, on our form, we have three different things. We have invitation to speak. We have an agenda item. And tonight, we have an agenda item with the rate increase from Recology. And if you want to speak during that piece, we'd ask you to fill out a piece of our comments and check the agenda item and get that to Melissa so that we'll have record of that. And then the last one is public hearing, which we're not having this evening. So, okay. We've got initially Ramsey McPhillips would like to speak under public comments. And he told me he was going to take his hat off.
I'm Ramsey McPhillips, 13,000 Southwest McPhillips Road. I'm here with a Ramsey McPhillips hat. I am not representing Zero Waste McMinnville whatsoever. I just wanted to update you on as the landfill turns a little bit as it relates to issues relating to rates. As you know, you left the landfill and there was some concern about what the cost of garbage would be when you did that. Since that time, Recology has changed landfills. They went to one landfill, now they're going to another. And I believe that the cost has been stable. Certainly, there was an increase in building the transfer station. But what I wanted to speak to you tonight really quickly about, to inform you about, is Metro has inked a final contract for their 2020 contract, which could not include Riverbend anymore because we were successful in asking Metro to go elsewhere. That contract is a huge amount of garbage that goes on for a multitude of years. And the staff that I spoke with this week at Metro reported that the cost of garbage going up to the gorge is less than what they were sending it here for. So that argument, that Riverbend landfill is something that the state needs because of cost, has been undermined by an actual contract twice here in this city. Yes, it costs some money to build a transfer station, but the actual cost of landfilling has not gone up here. Newburgh has one of the lowest garbage rates in the state. That's because they can't bring their garbage here. It's going somewhere else. And Metro now, 1.2 million people have inked a deal where not using Riverbend has lowered their garbage rates. I'm very proud of that and I just wanted the city to feel good about itself in that decision.
Thank you, Ramsey. Anyone else like to speak in the public comment section of our meeting? Seeing none, then what we'll do now is we have a presentation this evening. And we have an emergency response to Hurricane Michael. And we'll call on our battalion chief, Damon Schultz, who will present on emergency response efforts related to Hurricane Michael. Damon, it's good to have you with us this evening. And I think you're going to talk a little bit from personal experience.
Yes, actually. Thank you for having me here. This was a presentation I gave to the fire department a couple of weeks ago. The chief thought that it was something you might be interested in. So I apologize if it's not. Oh, sorry. So back in October, I was very fortunate to respond to Florida as one of the members of the Oregon IMT group that responded to assist with the recovery efforts of Hurricane Michael. I missed your ride along. Sorry about that. My apologies. But I need to thank the city and the chief, Chief Liefert, for sending me there. As the emergency management coordinator, the training was invaluable. Really got to see firsthand how one operates, how to actually operate within one and the amount of effort that goes into the recovery efforts of something that size. The whole time I was there, I kind of related it back to what would take place here if the Cascadia were to hit and how would it work and what would things look like in that response. Let me start with what an IMT is. Oregon has three incident management teams that are coordinated through the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office, one of which I'm fortunate to be a member of as a div soup or an operations level person in that. So two of our teams were sent down to Florida, one in Bay County and one in Gulf County, right next to it. So two Oregon teams are actually operating a major portion of the recovery efforts for Hurricane Michael in that respect. So, excuse me. This is a picture of our group out in front of the EOC that we helped operate. Is that loud enough?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. There's eight of us and we were, because we had already sent one crew down, we were short a couple of members. So there's actually two members of the ODF crew, Oregon's Department of Forestry, joined our crew. So together, we integrated together to make a team. This is just an example of where we were. That lighted area is Bay County and the Panhandle. That's right where the Eye of the Storm hit, for the most part, right in Mexico Beach, where all the news cameras and everything were. The county is not too much unlike Yamhill County in the size and the spread out of the cities. A little more population, a little bigger. But for the most part, it reminded me a lot of Yamhill County in the way it was laid out and the response needed. So this is a picture of the EOC that we operate in. I show that because in Florida, a little bit later, try to understand that Florida is very prepared for emergencies and hurricanes. And they actually have this EOC set up year round. And it's been that way for 18 years, sitting a lot like that with updates and stuff just for emergency management purposes. It wasn't quite big enough. So the neighboring county brought their mobile command unit there. Chief Liefert already authorized this to be in the budget next year. That's a $2 million command vehicle. That was just, that's where logistics was housed. So it was a very large operation, as you can imagine. In incident management teams, we love org charts. So that's just an example of ours on one day. Just for reference, the whole left side is the operations section. And that envelops about 12,000 people, give or take a couple of hundred at certain times. This is a map of the county. For the most part, the damaged area. I show that not just so you can get a lay of the land, but to kind of reference the importance of IS and GIS in the emergency management zone. This map, as well as the org chart and this map of Mexico Beach, all three of these were updated about every 12 hours. So we relied on the information systems and the GIS people almost as much as logistics people to get us the equipment to keep track of where we were and to be able to relay information from one group to another. It was very important. I just wanted to show a little bit of the damage. This is the west end of Mexico Beach. If you look up there on the upper left side, all the red destroyed houses. That's actually where they were supposed to be, for the most part. Title surge came in and removed the majority of the city. Now, this is a ground shot of that exact same area. I'm told there's three or four apartment buildings, just like that one in the back, missing. You can kind of see the slabs and the remnants of it, for the most part. This was driving down the main highway of Mexico Beach. Nothing too odd, except those two houses are actually in an intersection. And they actually came from the other side of the highway at this point. I was told one floated and the one on the far side actually rolled into that position due to the tidal surge. So you can kind of imagine the amount of damage that took place. Where they didn't get moved, this was most of what was left. Just the walls were washed out and just piles of rubble throughout. And then just further out towards our EOC on the north side, there wasn't much tidal surge, but this is an example of what the wind was doing in those areas. The road was just lined with the street signs just blowing straight down. And this is one of those big billboards that's on, I don't know how big that pipe is, that metal pipe, but the wind was strong enough to just bend those over. And all of them kind of matched exactly like that. So it was quite significant. So this is what really the emphasis tonight is the timeline. As I related, thought about how things would go here in this county. This was the actual timeline we used in our report for the state. And there's a couple of things I want to point out. The 13th is the day that we arrived. And the next day, so four days after the hurricane hit, the main highways were opened up at that point for most of the county. And so the highway, the freeway, the highway and any main thoroughfares through the roads, which accounted for about three or four roads. So just knowing that it was that much damage and that we had areas with equipment staged before the hurricane hit, it still took four days to get roads open just to pass into certain towns. If you look out at 10 days, the boil water advisory was lifted for the northern part of the county. And that was the first water that was in that area. And now it's almost 10 days out. So you can imagine in an earthquake how long it might take us in that case. At the 12-day mark, it was when the traffic lights were open and blinking. They weren't actually functioning, but they were blinking. And that was, they were pretty happy with that accomplishment. And at two weeks, they think they had all the roads open so people could get to all parts of all of the towns in the county. But you're still out at 20 days before the power company said that they had power to all their transmission lines. And that's not to the individual houses or businesses. That's just to the transmission lines. So if your house was damaged or you lost power to your house, you still didn't have power at that point. But there was power there. So you kind of use that timeline to think about what would happen here if we had an event very large and how that might affect us this far out from the I-5 corridor. So a couple of lessons learned. The Oregon Incident Management Teams, I learned that we are very well organized. I was very fortunate to be a member of one and to experience what took place there. Ended up being very proud of our operation. But then leaning back into the city, what we could learn from it, the need for our own training, department heads and people trained up in the EOC to certain positions became apparent. There were a couple of times inside the EOC where it was clear we could use more trained personnel from that locale to assist us with some areas. And then we spoke in the work session a couple of months back about the need for GIS and IS inside the EOC. That was definitely something that we need to work on and ensure that could happen. The one thing that really caught me off guard was the need to be ready to support the employees. That county had about 280 employees. I think about 50 of them lost their house. And then we, actually, two employees were killed in the storm cleanup. And so all the things that you have to deal with, with a regular employee staff coming to work, performing their job, and then you throw this on top of that, really was a lot to handle in the EOC and definitely affected how we work because those were the actual employees in the EOC doing a lot of the efforts as well. One thing, I list services made available. One thing we found out was because we had the employees always in the EOC, they were not out able to get public services like FEMA registrations and signups and some of the food that was being passed around the community because we had them in our EOC. So we developed a need for having to make sure that those employees received that as well. The main thing I learned, or at least I felt, was that timeline that I just showed you seems kind of a long time out. I mean, you're two weeks before there's water and electricity to most of the county. But thinking back how we had performed here, I don't think it would go anywhere near that fast. For obvious reasons, you know, we're not going to have warning in the event of an earthquake. It's going to happen. Generally, if you speak to the experts, personnel in this area and the public in this area is not equipped and prepared for disasters as well as Florida. Florida, they run hurricanes as a, like a winter storm, for the most part. They know what they're doing, they're prepared for it. Most of our citizens in this northwest area of Oregon are not prepared the way a lot of them are. We won't get the staged resources. Before the hurricane landed, there were 300 ambulances, six or seven different helicopters. And what I understand to be about 10,000 power and utility personnel staged outside the hurricane area. So as soon as it passed through, they were able to respond immediately to the areas that were most needed. And then included evacuating three hospitals with the ambulances and so forth. But that in itself took three days. So you can imagine if the I-5 corridor were to be struck, what it might look like here in that case. And even in that area, as well as they're prepared and as well as they were staged, the two weeks, obviously, if you look at that timeline, the two weeks was just a pass in the bucket. It was just, it was real fast. Two weeks went by and everything was still the same. So you can imagine here what might actually take place without the staged resources and with, you know, maybe Salem and Portland maybe being a higher priority for those kind of areas. Relate it to one of the guys at the fire station, like, you know, this is the winter storm and you're the guy at the end of that one power line that only serves like three houses. You're going to be the last priority. And so I don't know how we would line up in the event that the big one would hit. I have a video that I'll show. This was on a flight just leaving Mexico City. Kind of shows the devastation from air. But if you guys have any questions, I could answer those now if you'd like.
Okay, questions for our battalion chief? I'm just going to make a comment a little bit, how fortunate we are to have Damon as our emergency manager in his role at the fire department. I know we have this year had two community trainings, so to speak, where we've gotten together and we've had instruction, especially on that last item of two weeks. You know, families need to be prepared for up to two weeks. We're not going to be able to initialize ourselves to be out to help you. Being on the commission of water and light, I'm very impressed how prepared they are getting for this, knowing that they're going to, you know, water and lights, especially electricity is so important. We meet every other month at the county level under Emergency Management for the County and we're bringing together a plan. And I think we're making some substantial headway on that. But Damon, thank you for taking those extra duties on. And this experience that you've had is going to be invaluable to helping us. It's a different incident, it's a different type. You know, we look at Cascadia and we don't know exactly what that's going to look like or feel like or how it's going to affect us. But we know that we're going to be in the path of those coming from the coast this way. Our bridges, we've got lots of things to be looking at. But I'm feeling much more confident today than, you know, maybe a year ago, that we're putting things together. You've had some training with the council. We had that opportunity to hear the training of the incident center and, you know, what our responsibilities are. So I just tip my hat and I tip at the chief as we're going down that path. And then as we talked to Brian Young from the county, I think we're getting to a point where it's going to be, it's going to be something that's going to take our efforts continuously. But I think we've got the pieces in place to get us where, starting down that path. So again, any questions for Damon? If not, why don't we go ahead and roll your video?
I apologize for the sound. Is that something we can adjust if it's too loud? Oh, okay, so there's no sound. And sorry about the angle. I was just worried about dropping the cell phone. So that's the best I can hold it.
Well, if you were out on the wing, I can understand that.
It was pretty close. And we were spared the sound, so that was good. This is the flight over Mexico Beach, right against the water. About 30 seconds in here is where we actually see the area where the tidal surge took the most effect. I'm told everywhere where you see a blank piece of property actually was a building at some point, though. Some were totally removed and some were washed out to the, you know, out in the ocean when the tidal wave went out. And then, of course, the wind did its damage at the same time. And this is about the area where you actually start seeing total dismissing structures. And any structure you still see there is almost worthless. The tidal surge went up into the second story. So even those that were on piers and had the blowout walls were still flooded, for the most part, at least in the living area. And then this area is that spot where I had pictures on the ground and in the air from just this total devastation. And that is it.
Thank you, Damon. Again, just another piece of information. Had the opportunity to go to the American Public Power Association's conference last July. And we had numerous sessions based on cooperative agreements so that those power trucks and companies can be prepared to come in and be of great assistance very shortly. Or in this case, they knew it was coming, so they were enabled to go very quickly. And so that's a national effort that's going on and talk is happening among the association right now.
That was very impressive. I mean, there are 10,000 of them.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
Thank you. That takes us to our consent agenda this evening. And our consent agenda has one item, the minutes of the September 11th, 2018 City Council workshop and regular meeting. Is there any counselor that would have this item removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I'm moved.
And a second?
And.
It's been moved by Wendy and seconded by Alan. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This consent agenda passes unanimously, five to five. That takes us to our resolution this evening. And what I'd like to do, we've got Dave and Walter from Recology. If you'd come up and then we'll turn some time over to our attorney tonight, just to be available for answering questions. So we're going to be considering Resolution Number 201861, a resolution approving an out-of calendary rate adjustment for Recology Incorporated, 5% for solid waste services and requiring a completion of a rate study. And so I'll turn the time over to our city attorney, Dave Kosch, to make a presentation.
I'd like to defer the balance of my time to the city manager.
Okay.
That's fine, Mayor. Members of the council. So you heard during the last work session, a presentation from Recology about the full range of activities of the organization in this community, including the change in the recycling market worldwide and the impact that's had on Recology financially. They have requested a 10.47% rate increase to accommodate both the impacts of the change in the recycling industry as well as additional operating costs that have accrued over the course of time. And what's before you tonight is a resolution that would acknowledge that increased impact of the recycling market, but also identifies the opportunity that we have in our franchise agreement with Recology to do a rate review study. Our proposal at the staff level is to step that rate increase in, 5% effective January 1, 2019, conduct a rate review through an agreement with our independent auditor. And Marcia's available to talk a little bit more about that rate review if you have questions specifically about that work. And then based on the findings of that rate review, bring back a subsequent action if it's justified for an additional rate increase effective July 1, 2019. So that's a brief report from staff. In summary, I'll turn to Marcia to see if she'd like to add anything else with respect to the rate review. If you've got questions about that, you can direct them to either of us.
Okay. So let's open it up for any questions you'd have for Recology this evening. We've got Dave and Walter. Thanks for being with us this evening. So any questions that we might have? We will have open up for citizens to make three-minute comments after. And I've got your comment cards to call on that. But again, I wanted to start with Recology. Adam?
So a good portion of this rate increase is due to the recycling cost going from a profit to now a negative value. Although that all unfolded over this last year. So, I mean, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what the future is going to do. But say that recycling market did rebound and it became back in the positive, what do you guys intend to do with that money? Or would that just prolong a future rate increase?
So if that were to occur, and there's no indication, of course, that it would, then that increase in revenue would work back into the operating ratio just the way other revenue would and would calculate as part of the calculus of our operating ratio, just like any other sort of revenue?
Thank you.
And the two of you, I know Carl was here at our last meeting in our work session and gave us a presentation. So if there's anything additionally that you'd like to share with the council, feel free to do it during this time. The one question I have is we're looking at this rate and cost analysis audit. My understanding is our auditors are going to be the ones that are going to be providing that. I know you're not by the microphone, Marcia, but can you update us a little bit about how competent our auditors are in this arena? What they're going to be looking at? Because I think the council would like to know that as we're going through that in the first quarter of 2019.
Yes, I can speak with our auditors, as you said, who currently for the last three years have been doing our findings and statements wise. And they have a lot of experience doing these type of rate reviews. They have worked actually with Washington County, the city of Portland. As I spoke with them, they really are very knowledgeable and it's very much a niche business where you have to be really knowledgeable about the industry to be able to do as well. So a couple of things that we talked about doing, there would be an agreed-upon procedures review, which means that the city would contract with them to do this rate review and they would do the procedures that we had agreed upon. They could do things like reviewing the operating ratio, the calculation of the operating ratio. That's in the agreement that we have with Recology. It's pretty specifically spelled out how that's calculated. They would actually visit Recology for probably half a day to become familiar with how their operation works. Another thing they typically look at is, especially in a larger corporation like Recology, they would look at how overhead is allocated to the different cities and the different operations. And it's been quite a, you know, a lot of the focus on how the overhead is calculated and how it's allocated. We could ask them to do things like compare Recology's rates to industry standards and, you know, really any other aspects that we wanted them to look at. But they are really very experienced in doing this type of review.
Thank you, Marcia. Any questions for Marcia on that piece? Any thoughts from Recology at this point?
I have one more.
Go ahead, Adam.
So in Carl's presentation and in the document tonight, it references, you know, basically the residential rates. basically the residential rates. Obviously, it's an across-the-board rate increase. And Carl's thing, I believe it was to Sal's question last meeting, was that the other comparables, it's hard to get a direct comparison because of all the other residential factors that you guys provide for our city residents compared to, say, Corvallis, that might be an on-call glass collection or yard debris or whatnot. But from a commercial or industrial user that just have big dumpsters, how do our rates compare to other comparable cities with that? And are we still gonna be in line, or are we gonna be on the higher side of that?
I think, as you said, it depends quite a bit which area you're looking at and what services are offered on the commercial sector as well. From what I've seen, our rates are, are probably, in most cases, already higher than some and, and lower than others. And this rate adjustment wouldn't really, wouldn't flip those tables. I think Newburg, for example, i- is less than us, and they, so they would, they'd be that much more less than us. There are others who are higher, and I, this, this rate, this change wouldn't be enough to make, to change our position i- in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Does Newburg have a robust recycling program?
Yes, it's, it's in many ways very similar to ours. They have, they've had yard debris collection for, for several years. They didn't have the drop-off option there, so if you wanted, anytime you brought in material, again, this is my understanding, I don't live up there, but residents that brought in material always had to pay. There was, and we've had drop-off included, the curbside element's been fairly new for us. Up in Newburg, they've had yard recollection for several years, but their glass program is also fairly new. It came online around the same time as ours did.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. And the first one's just off of what you, what you were just talking about with the curbside glass. My memory could be faulty. Didn't, wasn't there a time when there was curbside glass and then it went away and then it came back? I mean, I know, I know when it came back. I was present for that, but...
So, yes, so from the beginning, let's say it was before my time even, so nineteen ninety-one, somewhere, nineteen eighty-three, if you go back farther, curbside collection programs included glass and included many of the materials we collect now. Customers were required to separate them all into different parts of their container or using additional containers. The fif- fourteen-gallon sort of square, bigger than a milk crate, but that same basic idea was, was the standard container. And so the change to mixed recycling really is what, is when glass recycling was dropped from the curb and became a depot-only program from that interval. So the mixed recycling here rolled out in two thousand and five, I believe.
I think that's right.
And so they were, there was a long stretch of time when, when glass was collected curbside, and then another chunk where it was not, and now it is again.
Okay. I'm sorry if some of that was repeat from what you just said. I was cross-referencing some of this stuff in different letters and... Okay. And then when, in both Carl's letter and in the memo we received, it talks about rates have now stabilized. So I, even though I think it's clear in here, I'm just asking for, to be sure, the stabilization is a stabilization at a, at a loss of seventy dollars a ton. That's the stabilized rate?
Seventy was, was one below. We're right around sixty for about the fourth month in a row now. So that's, to us, that's stable at this point.
Okay, so it's a stable loss?
Yes.
Okay. Um, in this rate increase, does this also leave room for expanded recycling programs without additional rate increases? Or is that, or does it address current service levels, period?
So it's, it's current service levels, period. Not that expanded recycling isn't possible. It depends on what it costs, just like anything else.
And with having a stable loss, what are some of the, what other options, if any,
For recycling in general?
Recycling in general.
Well, I, if I understand your question correctly, if we did not wish to collect mixed recycling, and some communities have opted to, to change their programs, where they, they dropped materials from curbside or dropped their curbside program entirely and it became a depot-only program, those options are still there. They would affect the operations side of, of things, but when it came to marketing the materials, unless, unless the items that were collected, that list was also pared down. Let's say we turned our depot into a cardboard-only program and you had to bring it to us. That would, that would change quite a bit, not only how much material we were recycling, but what the program would look like. So for us, as long as we're interested in having a mixed recycling program, it, it will look something very similar to what we're doing now.
What about on the latter half of it? So if, if with the current market not being able to take our recyclables, other, you know, are there other markets? Are there, are there any other options without changing the services you currently provide to the city?
Not yet. So we're hearing about, especially other countries starting to invest in, in domestic mills and things like that, those kinds of, of discussions are happening. It's slow, and it takes a lot of money to make that happen. So at this point, no, there's really not. From what I've heard, I believe we're looking at two to three years for some of these domestic programs to replace, to replace export markets, if that's what you're referring to. That's sort of the timeline that we've heard.
Okay. And in terms of bringing things back into line, are, are there any other financial tools other than a rate increase that could be employed at this time?
We've, we've really attempted to manage costs at this point. We, company-wide, have dropped headcount at this point. So there are always things that can be done. We've endeavored to do as much as we possibly can to this point to, to mitigate the cost in other areas and try to keep rates as low as we can keep them.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for right now.
Wendy?
Yeah, hold on a second. I just have a clarification on the table that is on the first page of your Valley two thousand and seventeen results of operations and two thousand and eighteen, nineteen projections. There is an adjustment and projected changes column. And the, there's one line that says proposed rate adjustment of seven oh eight four ninety-five. But I guess my question is, I thought all of this, this whole column was the proposed, it's on page one oh six of the packet.
So, so the, the column on the right of, so there's, there's six columns with numbers in them in that table. The column on the right are, are our projections. And so the, each one of the revenue lines, for example, is the projected revenue for that line of business, separate from the rate adjustment. So the rate adjustment gets its, the requested rate adjustment gets its own line.
Okay.
And that's the seven hundred and eight.
So that adjustment on each one of the lines is not based on the ten point four seven percent rate adjustment?
That's correct. Because these, these projections are being compared in this table to the, to our twenty seventeen calendar year, most of the change in those numbers is a combination of, of growth and the impact of the previous year rate adjustment on those lines.
That was my question, was if those were impacted by other things, and that's where you'd find them. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll ask for any further, further discussion or questions for our representatives from Recology. Go ahead, Sal.
Sorry, just last question. The, so my impression is that, that based on the operations projections, that the entirety of the rate increase that you're requesting is about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And if we were to have approved the ten point four seven percent, that would have brought in about seven hundred and ten thousand, a little less. So if we go forward at five percent, then you're at about four hundred thousand dollars less in terms of the recycling. Would that affect any of the services that we provide? I guess those are contractually set, but...
At this point, no. We would continue to operate, but we would not reduce service.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, hearing no, no other questions, I think what we'll do, thank you, gentlemen, we'll call on the public to give comment. And so we'll have you guys return to your...
Do you want me to come back? Or I think... So we had some, some comments to make.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, if you have comments for us, go ahead.
When I say we, I'm...
Okay.
And we've, we've covered most of it. So I won't, I won't belabor the point, but on behalf of, of Recology, we'd just like to thank the council for the consideration of the out-of-cycle rate increase. We'd like to thank city staff for the recommendation of the five percent rate increase at this point. We'd also like to respectfully request, of course, the full amount of the ten point four seven percent rate increase. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So now what we'll do is I'll call individuals up, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes and, and share it with the, with council. And again, this is public comment, so we won't have dialogue necessarily going back. So our first is Annalee Germain. And when I raise my hand, that will be your three minutes, and if you can conclude as quickly as you can.
Come to talk with you about styrofoam again. My name is Annalee Germain, and I'm a volunteer for Zero Waste McMinnville. I wanted to share some information about styrofoam. It's pretty evil stuff. First of all, the name styrofoam originally did not refer to this white fluffy stuff. It was the stuff that was developed for the blue insulation sheets that, you know, you can slime into your walls between the two by fours. That was styrofoam. But in the U.S. and in Canada, the colloquial term for styrofoam is now this stuff. As you know, it's used in food service and in packing materials. It's been made by Dow Chemical since the nineteen forties. It is about ninety-five percent air, and the rest is polystyrene, which is number six plastic. So the two can be recycled together. In order to make this stuff, they use benzene, which is a known cancer-causing material. The EPA has termed styrofoam a suspected carcinogen. So if they suspect it, it's probably true. Styrofoam is an environmental disaster. It makes up up to thirty percent of any given landfill worldwide, and it does incalculable damage to marine life because it disintegrates. And we now have styrofoam and polystyrenes in the oysters that you buy at your local market. Styrofoam is not biodegradable. It can last nearly forever unless the suitable solvents are used to break it down. Many cities and counties and even a couple of countries have banned styrofoam for food production and food use. And in Oregon, styrofoam has been banned in Ashland, Eugene, Medford, and Portland for food use. So styrofoam is a very complex issue in the overall sustainability of life on our planet. McMinnville has a very piecemeal approach to sustainability at best. So I want to share something with you. Zero-waste volunteers have gathered signatures for your information. There are over four hundred, nearly five hundred McMinnville citizens who are concerned about styrofoam and are asking the city to address this problem. May I approach to deliver this?
So why don't you give that to Melissa? Okay, I'll take it. And thank you for the consistency of your message.
I knew you would recognize me when I came in with this talk.
Right. Our next comment, Mark Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mark Davis, six five two, Southeast Washington Street. I have to admit, I come here with, at a, with a high level of frustration. I, I really like what Recology is trying to do in the community and what they actually are doing in the community. I mean, as, as Mr. Peters said last time when he was here, they're a recycling company, not a garbage company. Hey, I'm all for that. They're an employee-owned company, that's great, too. But I am very frustrated. This is the last two times they've come in here for rate increases. I've asked you for, to get more details so that we could see what was going on, and it was always, oh, we can't do it this time, we'll get to it next time. And now here we are with the third rate increase, and all we have is that little sheet they pass out. And I'm sorry, but that, a citizen cannot look at that and tell what's going on. I used to come in here when Mr. Cook was the, Joe Cook was the finance director at, their predecessor, I can't remember which name they were operating under at that time, but, and there would be an allocation of overhead, and you could look at it and, and make an intelligent comment about whether the rates were appropriated or not. Instead, we get this sheet that we look at and go, well, yeah, I guess that's okay. And, you know, anyway, I'm happy to hear that we're gonna have a rate study. I'm all for it. And everything that the finance directors said, I'm, I say include it all. And I hope that, that it won't come back to you as, oh, everything's fine, report, and that's, we don't, the public doesn't get to see anything. I'd like to see the details that we used to get to see so that we can make an intelligent comment up here. Beyond that, I mean, I, you know, you're gonna have to make a decision tonight, I guess, go for it, but I, you know, I, I'd like to see the details behind this before we grant them another increase, because they promised the last time that it was gonna last. And I understand circumstances have changed, and, you know, it's probably appropriate to, to raise it, but, you know, we need to get some background information before we keep granting these increases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I'm Ramsey McPhillips, and I'm, styrofoam is multiplying. I'm gonna speak on that subject as well. So I just wanted to briefly tell you about the current status of styrofoam in McMinnville. It's generally produced or used or brought into the community in the big-box stores in large quantities, such as Lowe's, Robie's, some other places. And shockingly, oftentimes, these big-box stores have a gizmo in the back of their store room, a compactor. And styrofoam oftentimes is thrown in with a bunch of other stuff and it's compacted because it's more economical for them to do that and then give that to the, the hauler at a lesser price. That, as an organization to us, is pretty shocking, and we'd very much like to have an outlet for styrofoam. an outlet for Styrofoam. And you'll hear from, um, people coming forward about how that possibly could happen. But, um, it has happened here before. Recology tried at one time to have, uh, Styrofoam recycling. They had a pyrolysis or a, a big, not a pyrolysis, a, uh, a cooker that was, um, consolidating the Styrofoam, but that was highly toxic. And so they immediately got rid of it. But that does speak to the fact that there is feedstock in McMinnville if the company was already willing to invest and try to take care of the issue. And so, um, we at Zero Waste are, um, pretty much in favor and understand the reason for these increases. But we're going to speak to the fact that this is an opportunity to add in something that very well might create some jobs and maybe standardize or reduce the garbage rate because, as Annalee just told you, 30% of it is going to landfill. Maybe if we found a better way to deal with it, that could, um, take care of some of the volume that is costing in this increase. So lastly, uh, Councilperson Remy, you, Drabkin, you mentioned, um, when Carl Peterson from Recology was here, isn't there something that, um, is out there? You know, a Miss Pac-Man that's going to eat all this, you know, garbage? And he basically said at this time, there really isn't anything at this point. Well, there are two things. One, education, and that's what, uh, Zero Waste McMinnville is very much trying to do, to help reduce the garbage. And second, there is a company, which I'm going to introduce this gentleman right now, a local, um, boy done good, a Frenchman from McMinnville, John DiMarque, um, who is from Agulix. And he is going to describe to you a process by which you can take the number six, polystyrene, which includes the fluffy stuff, and, um, put it into their system and, uh, utilize it better. So John?
And I've got a card for John also, so come up, John.
Thank you very much. I'm John DiMarco Jr. I have to say, I'm very proud that McMinnville Zero Waste is doing something so, uh, so big in not just looking at different avenues, but educating the public. For someone that was born and raised in McMinnville, it's really something to hold my hat on to as I talk to different municipalities about what they can do. And it's amazing what this group has been able to do in just the, what was it, two years or, or more?
More.
More, that they've been doing this. I, I, uh, want to talk to you a bit about what we're doing at Agulix. What we're able to do is we can take all different types of polystyrene, so not just the foam that you see over there, not just the extruded polystyrene that you may see in food handling, uh, meat packaging, uh, or clam shells. You might have seen it in, uh, many-to-go places, but we can also take rigid polystyrene such as in the coffee lids, uh, that most of the retail, uh, outlets have around here, as well as we can take items that were in the nursery, um, industry. So those planter trays that are kind of flimsy in sorts. We can also take disposable utensils and cups and, uh, plates. We had a program where we went to one of the biggest, uh, venues in Oregon, and we recycled all of their food handling items after it was used. They had a countless number, I think it was about 18 events, and all of that material after it was used was brought back to us, and we were able to recycle that. And what we are doing is using pyrolysis. So if you think of, uh, one single piece of plastic as all your fingers together, what we are doing is we're heating up plastic in the absence of oxygen to unzip those polymers. Those polymers then, we, or the monomers then, we condense down, and it creates an oil. That oil, we then send to a manufacturer that then re-polimerizes it and puts those fingertips back together. So by doing that, we're making a product that has up to 50 to 70% lower greenhouse gas generation than using virgin products. We're also reducing the amount of plastics that are going into the landfill, and we're making a product that's made in the United States, uh, to make new products. So we're taking the resources that are here already, these wastes, and looking at those to make new products. And the biggest thing that we have to figure out is how to get that material to us. Now, that might be a longer discussion than we don't have for right now. But I, I want you guys to think about different ways that we can do this, and we would love to take that. We have a facility running in Tigard, Oregon that runs at 10 tons per day. So if you think about that, that is a lot of foam. A lot of foam that we can take in, or rigids, all of that we can take in there. And again, reiterating, this is a domestic product that we're making and selling it domestically.
Well, I'm sure Ramsey has information, and maybe we can get and, and talk at the city and Recology and see what that might look like. Okay, next we've got Jerry. Welcome.
Jerry Hunter, local business owner, Zero Waste Board member. And I guess I'm not much of a baseball player, but I'd say they sent me up to, uh, bat cleanup. And everything's teed up pretty well, but I'll read through my notes here. Mayor Hill, I think you almost did my summary for the, for me there. But thank you for giving us all the opportunity to address you tonight. You've heard all already, and I'm sure you're aware, polystyrene and styri, Styrofoam and its other forms are a significant problem in the waste stream and a significant concern of the citizens of McMinnville. You also heard in Carl Peters' report to the council work session earlier this month that this is already a focal point for Recology. In his future program slide, Carl spoke to Recology's growing partnership with McMinnville Zero Waste, a commitment and a partnership we value very much. They've just been tremendously open to our efforts, and I think we really honestly do believe they're a recycling company. Carl also said one of the first things we're going to try to get rolled out, and it's just timely because of Christmas, is Styrofoam. Carl gave an excellent presentation on the recent challenges in the recycling industry. And yes, I'd like to echo his comments that recycling should be and needs to be viewed and treated as an industry. Uh, it's the right thing to do for any number of social and environmental reasons, but it needs to be done in economically viable way, or it can't, and it won't be done. That's why, as a private citizen and as a business owner, I support the rate increase that Recology is seeking. Uh, in response to one of Carl's slides discussing the role of the commodities markets, Counselor Drabkin asked, why do we don't, we see a local response to this? And I think you just heard that there is one. There's an industry in place. Um, John gave an excellent presentation of that, and there's plenty more where that came from. I'll skip a little of that because he really kind of covered it. So we get to the, uh, program alternative slide that Carl talked about. What can we do with our waste? And none of it's terribly appealing. Our local options really look like continue to recycle at a slightly higher rate, or ask for a concurrence from the DEQ and shove it in the landfill, which I don't think anybody wants to do. We applaud Recology's continued commitment to recycling and increased levels of service to their McMinnville customers, and I'm personally happy to see their plans to increase the frequency of glass collection. Ours is always full. Yes, you might be partly responsible for that, Remy. Our city and this council have shown leadership in these areas before. Carl mentioned the positive impact of the bag at Better Ordinance. He spoke to the, quote, "bold visionary positive step" by McMinnville and how it actually helps Recology by being able to offer, and to offer a differentiated, higher-quality recycling stock to the markets in the absence of these bags as a contaminant. We sincerely hope the council will support Recology's effort in continuing to recycle and hope that you'll approve the requested rate increase in order to enable Recology to have a sustainable business model that includes recycling. As with the previous rate increases tied to expansions of service to, that included curbside glass and composting, uh, we'd also ask that the council consider directing Recology to assess the implementation of a polystyrene recycling program to include a collection point at the transfer station and transfer of those materials. So while it may or may not be feasible right now, we think it's a really timely opportunity to take a look.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
And Beth? Welcome.
Thank you. I am Beth Freshmuth. I'm a resident of McMinnville and a recent volunteer with Zero Waste. And, um, more than anything, I am a concerned citizen because I see what I throw in my own garbage, um, in regards to Styrofoam as packages come in. And it, um, really dismayed me, and I really would love to see something done, uh, as a concerned citizen that would allow me and the other concerned citizens of McMinnville to be able to deposit our, um, Styrofoam and other, uh, plastics that we cannot recycle into. I, we're happy to take those into Recology, drop them off. I think anybody who is, is concerned about our environment is more than happy to, uh, make that effort to keep our plastics out of, of the landfill. Knowing what's happening in our oceans and to our sea life, um, is, it's appalling. And I want to, uh, just make a stand and let you know that it is very important for all of us to do our part in trying to keep, uh, Styrofoam and plastics out of our landfill and just be given the opportunity to recycle them. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. We've had an opportunity to have council discussion. We've had an opportunity to hear citizens' comments. And so we're considering Resolution Number 201861, a resolution approving an out-of-calender rate adjustment for Recology Incorporated of 5% for solid waste services and requiring completion of a rate review study. Do I have a motion?
Some discussion?
Okay, and a second?
No, I didn't make a motion. I said, are we going to have some discussion?
Okay, more discussion. Go ahead. Go ahead, Remy.
Okay, um, well, I think, you know, we have, um, two really great, um, partners represented in the room, um, or more than that, actually, looking around the room. But we have, but specific to here, we have both, uh, the voices of Recology and Zero Waste, both who have, um, helped, uh, move our city forward as, as being a, a leader and not a follower, um, when it comes to recycling. I know as the, other cities are considering a plastic bag ban, um, right now, I've been thrilled to hear, um, McMinnville named on the radio repeatedly, uh, over the last few days as, as one of the, uh, cities that has led with a, uh, a, a bag ban. And I, uh, and I've seen a lot of really positive, um, uh, work between, um, between these two organizations as well. When we did the rate increase last time and the expansion of services, uh, we were presented with, um, two different options. Option A was a needed rate increase and keeping, um, services as they, uh, what they were at that time. And then option B was a higher rate increase, um, with, uh, with the expansion of services that included the glass recycling and, and the compost bins. Uh, I think Fred Stemler was, um, at the helm of Recology at that time, and I, uh, recall him being, uh, what appeared to be somewhat surprised when we said, well, we'd like to really flush out, um, option B and see what, uh, an even greater rate increase, uh, would look like, um, surprised and, and happy. And, and I think that, um, generally, that, um, that rate increase at that time was well accepted by the community. Uh, I, I understand, I hear the need for the Styrofoam recycling. I think it's a really positive conversation to be had between, uh, or, or that I'm, I'm, it's a conversation that I'm glad has started and, and, and I hope will continue, um, with the city and Zero Waste and, um, Recology. In terms of this particular, um, uh, request for a, a rate increase, um, I don't see that kind of tiered perspective being presented to us of this rate increase, um, could be more manageable, uh, or, or we could do an even greater rate increase and expand these services at this time. So by no means do I, um, uh, by no means would I want to see the conversation stop. But I also, uh, want to make sure that our, our partner has everything that they need to continue providing the level of service they, they are, um, they are providing, uh, currently. So, um, all of that is to say that, um, I think we find ourselves in kind of a, an unfortunate circumstance right now. And, uh, a lot of markets are being affected and a lot of businesses are being affected and, um, i- in different ways. And so in order to, to support Recology, to maintain their current, um, uh, services, I, you know, I, I see the, um, the rate increase, whether we do it in the tiered way that the staff's recommended or, um, or fully, I, I, I think that that needs to be, um, I, I think that we really don't have a choice. And, and then, oh, along with that, um, I also recognize what, uh, Mr. Davis brought up, and, and that is true. We have, um, we have in the past said that we're going to take a, a deeper dive into, um, um, those finances or, or, and make them more available, and we haven't, um, done that. So, um, I thought that there was a, a lot of great things brought up. I'm excited to learn about your business, um, and, um, happy to have Recology as a partner.
Thank you, Remy. Other discussion or comments? Alan?
Remy, well said. I support most of what you said. You know, it's, I think we do need to listen to Mr. Davis. And get some more detail on this. I, I really feel strongly about the Styrofoam also. I think we should move forward in a major way of, uh, of directing. I think that's the voice of the community, really. Anybody who has fought that stuff and seen it blown down the highway and knowing that it's just going to take up a bunch of room in our landfill and, and, uh, not a good room either, uh, being a toxic material, plastic, number six. So, and my own personal feelings is, is I hate this stuff. And combined with the evidence that's been presented tonight and in the past, um, by this lovely lady and others, um, it's, it's just, uh, very obvious to me that I'd like to see more detail, uh, concerning a rate increase that would show the detail related to the, um, collection of Styrofoam and the eventual elimination of it. So I'm, I am in favor of not voting for this tonight, of, of following what the council would like to do about this rate increase and how, how it, uh, should be more fine-tuned to, uh, protect the interests of our community as a whole. And Recology, being a member of that community and a, a really good partner, um, still needs to be, uh, uh, those things have to be accounted for, for a rate increase. So that's how I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Other comments?
Um...
Adam?
I'm definitely in favor of figuring something out to do with Styrofoam, like Alan mentioned, um, as well as what Mark's mentioned a few times, once while I've been up here and once while I was out in the audience with him about a, a deeper dive into the accounting. And, uh, you know, I, if we were going to vote on this tonight, I, I think that I would be in favor of staff's recommendation of the 5% with the rate review, but in that rate review, also bring back the cost analysis for having the Styrofoam. If Recology already doesn't have those numbers, if you have those numbers and can share those tonight, that would be great. But I didn't see them in your packet, so I'm going to guess that you don't have them.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. Any other comments, discussion? Sal?
Yeah, I, I find myself very much, uh, aligned with, uh, Alan's thinking about, uh, about, uh, holding off, uh, voting on this until we get a little bit more data, uh, and also including the Styrofoam, uh, as, uh, part of the, uh, the package.
Thank you, Sal. Any other thoughts?
Um, I, I think we've had some really good discussion. I really, uh, appreciated the, the testimony we had tonight and all of the information. I know that that's how the bag ban came about, was having really good data from our citizens. And I really appreciate that partnership. And so I did, I do like that, how the, um, city recommended that we, we split it so that we would be able to, before we do another rate increase, evaluate the numbers. I would like to maintain that evaluation, um, to Mark Davis's testimony. And I also would like to have some information about the Styrofoam, whether we have them do it before we do the, the evaluation, or we wait on this vote and have them do it. I think that that's important for us to continue to move forward and see what we can do. When there is technology that's local out there to be able to handle this huge problem that we have, I think it's a responsible thing for us to really evaluate it with good data. So that's where I stand on it. for us to really evaluate it with good data. So that's where I stand on it.
Thank you, Wendy. So each of the councillors have had an opportunity to share their thoughts. And so before us tonight, though, we have Resolution 201861. And that resolution is approving an out-of-calender rate adjustment for Recology Incorporated. And it sits right now at 5% for solid waste services and requiring the completion of a rate review study. Do I have a motion?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Go ahead.
This is a vote on the first reading of the resolution, is that right?
No, let me clarify. Because this is a resolution and not an ordinance, a motion to approve it is a motion to approve it in one sitting. Other alternatives available to you include tabling the resolution to either a date certain in the future or contingent upon us bringing further information back on a particular subject for you to consider.
I'd like to so move.
So move what?
There's no motion on the floor.
So we do not have the option of adding a fifth resolution at this time?
What I would, what I would say is that if there is amendments that you want to make to this resolution, that there be a discussion of that here and that staff be sent away to redraft the resolution and bring it back to you at the next meeting, having captured the thoughts, if that's what the council wants to do. If the council instead wants something other than that, there just needs to be, I guess, a discussion, understanding of that. The resolution is before you, it was simply staff's recommended resolution, but it's up to the council to decide how to move forward with that.
Was this other part of the conversation that's come up so heavily tonight, a part of the conversation that led to staff's recommendation?
Regarding the styrofoam program? No. No, the staff's recommendation was based on the perspective that the changes in the recycling market drove roughly half of the Recology's requested rate increase. I am persuaded, not just by the information that Recology presents, but a fair amount of reporting and analysis on the recycling industry worldwide, that this is not a short-term fix, that it's probably the new normal for a period of years until either additional international or domestic markets evolve to deal with the traditional recycled materials. So I think that the 5% that we're recommending would primarily address the unanticipated costs of recycling. It would not accommodate an expanded recycling program to handle the current materials in a different way or to add a new material like styrofoam, but simply the current programs that we have. The rest of the rate increase is described as cost of living or increased cost of operations. It's our assessment at the staff level that the opportunity to do a rate review will give us clarity on whether those are appropriate numbers. It'll give us the chance to have an independent perspective on overhead costs and the other operating expenses and revenues that Recology has identified in their financial reports and give the council maybe some comparable perspective on how other communities are handling these issues. It seemed appropriate to split the rate increase in that fashion. If the council's interested in asking for Recology and staff and other partners to look at a more robust recycling program that would include styrofoam, my recommendation would be that you table this resolution. It's not clear to me how long it would take to get that information back to you. And that as part of tabling the request for the fee increase, there's an understanding that we would still pursue the rate review. And by delaying the fee increase to a time yet to be determined, it's going to put Recology in a place of continuing to incur costs. And I don't know that we would be in a position of saying that the current rate increase would be adequate for future needs. So.
I think kind of what I heard from my co-councillors and where, at least what I'm understanding is that myself and if I could be so bold as to speak for at least a few others, is that there's no desire to create a additional hardship for Recology by delaying. But, and this is just from my own perspective, but when we did have that presentation about rate increases and we were given that two-tiered approach that said, this is, you know, this is the rate increase we need, this would be the rate increase with expanded services, really was, that was so valuable for us to be able to make that decision. So, yeah.
Just quickly, where I'm coming from is that I would like to see this tabled because not to hold leverage against Recology, who is an excellent partner of ours, but to actually get to where we can get serious about recycling styrofoam and see what Recology's thoughts are on that and to have another meeting like this to where people can express their opinions. I really feel like it's a strong issue in the city of McMinnville. I just really have that feeling after talking with a lot of other people. And so I'd like to see it tabled for another date. Not that the demand for the 5% is not justified at all. That's not the point. I think they can hold tight for a little bit longer and let us have more discussions and to see what's on the people's minds.
Any other comments? Sal?
The only thing I just wanted to reaffirm is that I am very sympathetic to the overall approach and framework that the city staff put together in terms of a smaller piece and then a rate review along the lines of what Jeff said. So I don't want to give up on that part of the concept.
Okay. I would say that another option available to council is to simply not take action on the resolution tonight. Not, if no councillor makes a motion to move it forward, then the resolution does not move forward. You don't need to table it if it's not something that's, there's been a motion made on the floor to carry it forward. That would allow us to work with Recology to come up with a reasonable time that they could come back to have that additional discussion, if that's what I'm hearing from the council. The way I see it, it seems to be like there may be two prevailing thoughts here, and I'm not sure which one carries the weight of three of the five of you. One is that there'd be no action taken on the resolution tonight, and we come back at some point in the near future, based on when Recology can bring information related to what it would cost to implement a styrofoam recycling program and the timeline associated with that. Second option would be to move forward with the resolution tonight with the 5% increase based on the increased costs of the existing recycling program that were unanticipated at the time of the last rate increase and still work with Recology to bring that further discussion forward prior to consideration of any future rate increase. And that could be done in conjunction or separate, prior to, separate from the rate review study. So one of them would take action tonight, approving the 5%, and could still move forward with the recycling discussion of styrofoam. The other one would hold off any discussion of the rate increase in this motion pending the review of the styrofoam discussion. That seems to be the two prevailing thoughts that I'm hearing.
So with this, just a clarifying question, the next rate review would be 2020? Is that?
The proposal that Recology made that was that with the full increase, they would not bring back a rate proposal until the spring of 2020. Our suggestion is that we conduct the rate review analysis this spring, late March, early April. And we would intend to do that whether the council approved all or no or partial rate increase. If we're going to, if, it feels a little bit like closing the gate after the horse has left the barn to approve the entire rate increase and then do the rate analysis. Because if the rate analysis doesn't justify the requested amount, then you're in a position of having already implemented the increase. That's really why we suggested splitting. If what the council would like to do is to see an additional tier of service specifically related to recycling, we can pursue that with Recology, whether or not you take action on the 5% or no percent. We can also take action on the rate review. So you've really got three different concepts that are sort of floating around. They're not necessarily mutually exclusive.
And, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, so the, we have been able to, with our own knowledge, verify that we feel like it's accurate, the 5% is covering just changes to the costs, the existing costs, to them to function.
Based on what other communities and other haulers have done related to changes in the recycling market worldwide, I think 5% is on the low end of what many communities are adopting to deal with the change in the recycling market. There's also substantial research that indicates that this recycling market's not going to change dramatically in the near term.
So, I mean, I see that especially since we'd be looking at it in July. I mean, I, it seems reasonable that we would then have a discussion about what a reasonable rate increase would be, and then Recology could come back in and talk about that tiered program at that time as well. That's our other option, is to pass the 5%.
And would this council meeting serve as enough direction for staff, or would there have to be more formal direction, given that we would want that tiered approach that included styrofoam recycling to be part of the rate review?
I feel comfortable that that direction's been clear tonight. I haven't heard anybody suggest that we shouldn't be having that conversation with Recology.
So we have a couple of different options to go. I think the easiest one is, again, before us tonight is a resolution that includes a 5% plus having a rate of a rate review study performed. And we hear that's going to happen in March or April. That's scheduled. We've talked to our auditors. So to move forward with this, I would need a motion. Hearing none?
Wouldn't that be where we would add in, plus an evaluation of the addition of styrofoam and the impact on rates?
I think to do that, if it's a part of the resolution, we need to have that, take them back to staff and then brought back to us in the 11th of our meeting, December 11th.
At some point in the future. I'm not sure that we would have the information.
So, so, two things. One is I suspect that it's not reasonable to have an answer on the question of styrofoam before you in two weeks. You don't, that's, a resolution's not the only way you can direct staff. If you want us to pursue that initiative with Recology and to have it be part of the next rate proposal, whenever that is, you can simply do that by motion. If you're persuaded that a 5% increase now to accommodate the change in the international recycling market is a reasonable approach, you can adopt the resolution. We would move forward with that 5% rate increase. We'd move forward with the rate review study. If you want to make a separate motion, simply directing staff to pursue options for recycling of styrofoam materials to be brought back in conjunction with a future rate proposal, that's all you need to do by motion. So you could do that second motion and make that clear on the record if you'd like to take that approach.
Adam?
Does Recology have any idea how long it would take you to get us those numbers on styrofoam, like possibly by our first January meeting?
So first, let me say that the presentation from the gentleman from Felix is exciting, and that's really, really encouraging. Until we know what the collection services would look like, whether this is part of our depot that we have on Archer Road Avenue, or if it's curbside collection of all of this numbers, I mean, until we know what we're really talking about, I hesitate to give you any specifics. That being said, you know, let's go. Let's figure out what we want to do. And we'll do our best to get you the answers as soon as we possibly can.
All right. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay. So again, I will ask if I have a motion for Resolution 201861.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved. Do I have a second?
I was gonna make a motion, but.
Oh, okay, different motion?
I would like to make a motion to table this until the first January meeting with the intent of approving at least a 5% increase with styrofoam costs at that presentation.
And if we don't have the numbers on that yet, then I think that's what Jeff was saying, that we can tell staff to bring that back, but putting it, a timeframe around it where we may not have enough time to have that come back in January.
It's too fast.
I think the question comes down to, do you want to hold off on any rate adjustments for Recology until you have information on a potential styrofoam recycling program?
Well, I think the, for me personally, the rate increase of the 5% is related to recycling costs. So if we're going to recycle styrofoam, we should include those styrofoam costs in a recycling rate adjustment.
So the 5% was related to the cost of their existing recycling program, not?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. All right. So.
If we're going to add to that.
Okay, so I think what I'm going to do, I do have a motion on the table right now. Sorry, I didn't look that way, Adam.
You have a motion, but you haven't had a second yet.
We haven't had a second yet. So I'll just wait for a second. And this would be for the 5% increase on the current recycling use seats that we're picking up and recycling with a rate review to come in early, in spring. So I have a motion, a second.
Wait, did you make that motion?
Okay, not hearing a second. We, so we don't have this resolution going through now. If you want to instruct staff to do, I'll turn to Adam because you had an approach.
Yeah, I would just like to, I would like Recology to, you know, recover the cost of the changing recycling market. But with that, I would like to have the data of what styrofoam recycling would cost them to offer that to our citizens. And, you know, I would be up for exploring that to be included in that recycling rate adjustment. But anything outside of that, their CPI or their labor operation increase, I want to hold off on any of that rate increase until after a rate review.
You're holding off on the rate increase that is based on what they're currently doing, based on the market, because you consider the, what we want them to add to be a part of that bundle?
Exactly.
I see, I see what you're saying. Okay.
So then how does that, so, you know, as Wendy said earlier, if we were to approve this now, but then that secondary rate review, which currently is supposed to be a cost of living increase, if, but if, if, but are we beholden to it just being that?
That's what I was thinking, is that the reality is, I want to see, okay, they have, right now, they're having, they're not able to maintain sustainably what they're doing with the cost. And our, Jeff and David are telling us that that is reasonable based on everything they're seeing in the market. So all we would be doing is allowing them to have the sustainability based on market knowns, but then giving them the directive to say, when we evaluate any more increases in March, we're also going to be looking at what it would cost to add styrofoam. That's what I was thinking we were approving when I made the motion.
And be.
Is that accurate? I mean, is that inaccurate?
Well, again, I think this rate review study is going to play big time into the next level of rates that would cover cost of employment and those types of things. I think that whole, that whole study will give us insight into how they are accounting for, you know, their operations. And that's the piece that I don't know that we have our hands completely around. Sal?
So I think Adam is, and maybe Alan are the, if I'm just, I just want to kind of see if I have the perceptions right. But it seems to me Adam and Alan are basically saying that they would like to see the rate review happen before the 5% increase. At least that's what I'm hearing from you. For me, I think that the 5% increase or that the increase. the increase based on the changes in the recycling market is indicated and justified. I think that doing, taking no action tonight would probably give us the most flexibility in terms of staff and Recology bringing something back. So that's just what I'd suggest to my colleagues.
Sal, well said, it's, you never know, there may be another partner or two involved in this. So I'd like to just give it a little bit of time to let everybody feels about it. The Styrofoam is an issue, we know it is, and it's an important issue, and we should move forward on it. And what direction is what I'd like to see us talk about with our partners and go from there.
So rather than tying our hands with any particular motion at this point, what I would request is that, I think staff has heard the interest of the council strongly in considering a Styrofoam recycling program and to helping facilitate that discussion with Recology and Zero Waste and other partners related to that, that there is still some potential appetite for considering out-of calendary rate adjustment of 5% related to the increased costs of the current recycling program, but not tonight, and that the rate review is still something that's desired by council prior to consideration of any other rate increases related to operations. So we would strive as staff to bring this matter or some version of it back to you in the near future. I can't say that it will be by the first meeting in December, but certainly without too much delay, once we've had a chance to have some of those initial meetings, so that you've got some more information to work off of before you are asked to take a vote on this again.
Okay.
I would like to say we'll have at least an update for you, if nothing else, by your January, first meeting in January.
Thank you, David, for clarification. And my last caveat to that is, for me, the Styrofoam doesn't need to be curbside, it could be drop-off, because that's the lowest cost a way of doing it, but we have an outlet within our community and we start slow and we build, you know, there are a lot of packaging that is not with Styrofoam anymore. People are getting smarter around that. So I would go with a low-cost approach to staff. Okay, with that being taken care of, let's go to our advice and information items this evening. Reports from counselors on committee board assignments. Alan, we'll start with you. I know we've had a Thanksgiving in between and many meetings have been canceled, but go ahead.
I don't think I have anything to report.
Okay.
We just haven't met and we had the holidays and I know we've had a couple of interviews.
Couple of interviews for the Airport Commission.
Right, we've had two and the third one coming up.
And third one on Thursday at four o'clock. So that's, that's about all I can tell right now.
Thank you, Alan.
Thanks.
Remy?
Tomorrow morning, 10:00 AM Affordable Housing Task Force meets at the Community Development Center.
Great. Wendy?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Adam?
Our next YCOM meeting is the 13th of December and we should go live hopefully on our new software system by then, so should have a lot of information for you in January.
Okay. Sal?
Council of Governments does meet this month, but we haven't had one since the last meeting.
Okay. And I just want to report on the bypass committee. We had our meeting two weeks, week and a half ago, and our comments at that meeting is that Peter DeFazio will become the chairman of the Transportation Committee in the House of Representatives, which gives some very heavy weighting in transportation, and he's all about infrastructure, which has been the slow piece. And so we have our lobbyists, both federal and state, working in that arena, and we anticipate that moving quicker than slower in getting what we call shovel-ready is important. We have design work, initial design work taken care of right now. We're working on right away, but we're putting a lot of emphasis on ODOT to get us ready for that next infrastructure, because we're the closest project in the state of Oregon that could qualify for those dollars. So a lot to be happening there. We determined that we wouldn't meet in December, but after our discussion, we're meeting in December. So that's how, how much of a focus we have around that. So, Department Heads, Chief?
Mr. Mayor, I'll defer my time to Kylie.
Good. Kylie?
Thank you. Not a whole lot to report. We've been doing some trainings with our staff, most recently a supervisory training that we did in conjunction with the city of Dundee and the city of Newburgh, and that went really well. We're recruiting right now for a fire operations chief, so you could have said that. And that's going well. We're also in the midst of building some buy-in for the applicant tracking system that I'd mentioned before. So we've had some demos with our executive team and we'll do that with key users shortly. And then we are well on our way to achieving compliance with the Oregon Equal Pay Act. So we've got until the end of December to make sure that we're not out of compliance with that. So we're well on our way.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that?
Good.
Equal Pay Act, could you give me a brief?
Certainly.
Summary of what that act is?
So the Oregon Equal Pay Act has been rolled out over, at least over the past year. There's been provisions that have happened and they continue to roll out. The premise of the act is to ensure that people are paid comparably for doing comparable work. So the job title doesn't really matter, but the work that an individual does, if Rich and I do the same job, we should be paid comparably.
Don't you both put out fires?
I kind of do. In a way.
As many fires as I do.
Yeah. So what we need to do is take a look at all of our jobs. So we're doing a job description review right now, and then there's a series of factors that we're going to be using to analyze those jobs and grouping like jobs together. It's kind of a prequel to a classification plan. So once we find those like jobs, if we have multiple employees working in those, we'll take a look at people's total compensation and if there's a disparity there, we'll figure out if it's justifiable. If not, we would need to adjust pay to fix that.
So that includes gender and everything else that goes with that as far as equal pay?
Since every single person is in a protected class of some sort, we almost don't even look at them. We just look at the work that they're doing and the pay that they receive.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Marcia? Melissa? David?
No, just trying to remember what we read.
Okay. And Jeff?
That's all right, I'll let you know, David. Just Battalion Chief Schultz sort of let the cat out of the bag that Chief Lightford's going to budget for a mobile emergency response center. The good news is he's given up on his request for helicopters, so that'll sort of trade off. Just a reminder that the city's annual holiday party is coming up December 15th. I hope you'll all be there. The theme this year is Monaco, a night in Monaco, black tie, I guess, kind of thing.
Really?
Hope you're there.
It's not black tie.
If you want to be in Monaco, you know, you don't have to be, but some people might be.
Tux shirt, tie and Levi's.
Tuxedo t-shirt, there you go.
Okay. A part of our packets were the building division reports and the cash and investment reports. Anything else that needs to come before the council this evening? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.